Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a room full and it's indicative of an agenda that is full as well. And so we will start on time in hopes of moving you through as we go tonight. And we'll certainly take a break or two if you need to leave. We'll afford you that opportunity because we've got lots of presentations this evening. And so I know many of you are here for that. And we're probably standing between you and dinner, or maybe you and homework if you're young enough. So we don't want to interrupt either one of those. So thank you for being with us. This is a regularly scheduled called and convened Greer City Council meeting held January the ninth, 2024, our first meeting of 2024. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like Councilman Riley Bettis to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and an invocation for council. You may stand and join us if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this council of people of integrity and duty to fellow citizens. I pray that you would help us to recover this one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. I pray that you will deliver us from traitors and frauds who fail in their responsibility to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that worship money, power, manipulation, intimidation, deviance, and deceit, that reject your absolute principles of life, love, morality, equality, and creation. Never has it been more important to judge someone on the content of their character. I pray for your guidance for this world and for this council. Amen. What a pleasure this evening as we swear in new council members, or not necessarily new council members, but swear in some council members this evening, as well as myself and Mr. Perry Williams, who is Commissioner of Public Works. We are joined this evening by the Honorable Hank Memes, who is our city judge. And he is going to be administering the oath of office for us. Mr. Memes is a longtime member of our community, a Blue Ridge born and raised, if I'm not mistaken, and Detroit, by way of Detroit. So all one in the same, is it not? He and his wife have offices uptown and he certainly is a member of this community that we respect and look up to, has held authority in our court for how many years now?
Eight years.
Kirsten would tell on you, but I don't think she will tonight. A long time, and we appreciate what you do for us, Judge. We really do. With that then, I'm going to ask the judge if he would. We will be administering two oaths of office tonight, one that is of state constitutional effect and one that is of state law effect. Our first member is Mr. Jay Airwood, who was recently elected to represent District One. And if you would move to the front, and if you've got somebody in the audience you'd like to join you, and holding the Bible this evening now is the time. And it looks like we're gonna have the family come up, which will be nice. I would ask that you, unless you need to leave, we're gonna dispense of a few items here on our agenda that will not take us long. And then we've got some special recognitions to make this evening. I would hope maybe that you have enough time to spend a few more minutes with us this evening. Mr. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, council, let's go ahead and move to the minutes of the council meeting from December the 12th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we had a workshop on December the 12th, 2023. That will require action as well. If you would, please make a motion to enter those into the record, and I'll need a second as well.
So move.
Second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. As we move to special recognitions, I want to take just a moment before we get to the agenda item. As you observed this evening, we swore in Districts One, Three, Five, my position as mayor and Commissioner of Public Works as well. And always nice to have those people that are offering themselves for public service and serve this community in so many different ways, but particularly in an elective forum. We try to observe with our employees regular recognition for their years of service. And tonight, I would like to recognize some folks that are here at the table for years of service as well, because I think they're noteworthy in terms of the length of time that they have been with this council. And so in January of '24, Mr. Riley Bettis has served 24 years on this council, and we appreciate that service. Jay Airwood will observe his 20th year here on council this month. Lee Dumas from District Four will celebrate in February of '24, 15 years on this council. And Judy Albert, this month celebrates 15 years of service on this council as well. Please give these folks a round of applause.
I am observing 24 with Riley.
There you go. Indeed. And we have two folks with us that are stacking up some years, and we'll recognize you appropriately as the time comes. Let's do some special recognition this evening. We are recognizing three women this evening, ladies that have served this community in a number of different places. To give you some idea of their influence on this community, we had the worst weather day we've ever had until about two, three hours ago when it cleared up so that they could all get here without getting blown away or too wet in the rain. So we appreciate the weather clearing up. It's one of the things that I've started doing this year is trying to recognize folks in our community who have made a difference. And there are certainly without rest a number of folks that have done that. In coming years, we're going to try and recognize those people who have given them their time and their talent and of themselves in so many different regards to make Greer the community that it is. And in even just a small way, we want to recognize that. We have three outstanding people this evening that I would like to recognize. And if I were to read all three of the bios of these three ladies, we would still be here this time tomorrow evening. So not to slight anyone of anything that they have accomplished, but just to give you some overview of some of the people that we want to recognize, I'd like to call our first recipient, Ms. Margaret Burge. Come to the front, please.
It goes without any saying or introduction, Ms. Burge has had a profound impact on our community. She served 20 years on the Greenville County School Board and was elected its first female chairman. The work that she did for this community during that time was absolutely revolutionary. Just looking through this, during her tenure, Greer got a new high school, a new middle school, Riverside Catholic Middle School, the facilities at Woodland were revamped and addition was added at Crestview. There was a conversion of that school as well, too, and it included Chandler Creek and the Bonn's Career Centers. All were facility conversions. So it's just an impeccable agenda in terms of what she did to help our schools. She served on the Greenville Tech, Olive Board, Trustee's, and numerous other county state boards and awarded the Order of the Founder in 2002. Please join me as I award Ms. Burge. Key to the city, which we've left this key to the city of Greer serves as a token of appreciation to Margaret Burge, whose staunch advocacy for educating special needs children sparked sweeping change in the Greenville County Schools and led to her service of 20 years on the Greenville County School Board, where she fought to improve facilities and opportunities for Greer students. She continued that mission as the first executive director of the Greater Greer Education Foundation upon its founding in 2009, and served as chair from 2011 to 2015, presented this day, January 9th, 2024, by Mayor Rick Danner. Join me in recognizing Margaret Burge. And there she is. Come on up, neighbor. I say neighbor about Carolyn because means a lot more than where you live. And if you have ever been around Carolyn, you will hear her or to the people that are served by the organization that she leads and the people that serve as neighbors. I think it is so appropriate because regardless of who you are in this community, where you live in this community, what you do or don't do, you are a neighbor. You are somebody's neighbor. That is something that Greer Lea has founded a mission on, and that is comes in the direction of Carolyn at Greer Lea since 2007. It goes without saying that that organization serves as need people in Greer as any other group other than taking the city. And so we are certainly appreciative of all the efforts of not only you, but your board members and your volunteers and all the others that have come up with so many great programs, innovative programs, and done such a great job of serving our community, and we appreciate that. Carolyn is also a founder of the, is the founder of the Greater Greer Nonprofit Roundtable and is graduate of the Franciscan University Nonprofit Leadership Institute, graduated from Leadership Greer, and we won't say which one doesn't always the best one. And she's served on multiple boards and has won countless awards as well, too. Carolyn is a Clemson alum, retired, and was a proud member of the band, and still takes the opportunity from time to time to go to the alumni events as well, too. And so we appreciate her service to our community. And so in that regard, I would like to present you with the key to the city, the creed. Let this key to the city serve as a token of appreciation to Carolyn Larson, for her outstanding leadership as executive director at Greer Lea and Resources since 2007, maintaining a lifelong love of service and inspiring our community to ensure that needs are met for neighbors in Greater Greer, presented this evening, January 9th, 2024, by Mayor Rick Danner. Join me in a round of applause. Last but certainly not least, Ms. Donna Smith, if you would, I'd love to join you. Please, ma'am.
I could literally call her neighbor, but I could look down our second floor windows and see your house. So yeah, we are neighbors. Donna has spent, Keith is here with her this evening. Keith, a very active builder in our community for years and years, and Donna figured if Keith was gonna start building houses, she'd start selling them. And she has been with Berkshire Hathaway for over 30 years and is broker in charge for 25 years of the Greenville and Simpsonville market, approximately 50 agents and $100 million in revenue. So busy in that regard and has been active in a number of things in regards to the real estate market, which we will talk about a little bit more as we go along here. Donna has been active for a number of years in the chamber, and they helped sponsor an award for the chamber as well, and we appreciate her work in that regard. Donna was instrumental in forming the legislative committee and helped with their agenda. And she recently helped us with an item that required some knowledge and some leverage and knowing some folks, and certainly it was appreciated by the city in terms of her advocacy for the city. And I don't have any doubt that if we need her again, she would be standing by, ready to help us. She and Keith both are active in representing their respective industries as well on various boards and commissions and committees. Donna serves on a number of national boards in regards to the Realtors Association. And I believe that you may be the only person that I know that has actually testified before Congress. Is that right? Has testified before Congress in regards to her service to that association. And so with that, I would like to present Donna Smith with a key to the city that says, this key to the city of Greer serves as a token of appreciation to Donna Smith for her professional acure and unwavering commitment to involving the business, cultural, and educational environment in the city, state, and nation through leadership and mentoring roles, presented this evening, January 9th, 2024, by Mayor Rick Danner. Join me in congratulating you.
Folks, we are so fortunate in this community to have people that care about this community. And as you saw, some examples this evening, folks that are often willing to put helping others before self. And so we certainly appreciate that and want to make these special recognitions from time to time. We certainly appreciate all that folks in this community do, and so want to congratulate those winners. We have a presentation as well, too, and then we'll take a little quick break after that. But Ann Cunningham has joined in us this evening and is the Director of Parks and Recreation and Tourism for the city of Greer. And we'll introduce, and was going to introduce Jim Hedley, who is the Executive Director of the South Carolina Recreations and Parks Association. Mr. Hedley was coming up from Columbia, I believe, and weather prevented him from being able to do that. But it is important that we take time to recognize two of our own, Mr. Justin Miller, who is the 2023 Scarpa Programming Branch Professional of the Year, and Red Watson, who was the 2023 Scarpa Professional of the Year. Again, this goes back to leadership and to understanding a community. Two homegrown men that grew up in our recreation programs and in this general area and understand what it means to provide quality programming and recreational services to all of our community. And it is nice to have these men recognized on a statewide basis by their peers. Ms. Cunningham, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, Jim was unable to come, and he certainly sends his regards. He did ask that I present these awards on his behalf as well as the membership for SCRPA. I'm certainly honored to do that. The South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association's Programming Branch created a new award category this year, Programmer of the Year. The recipient of this award must have done impactful and meaningful work in the community and deserve this recognition amongst their peers. The recipient of this award must be a programmer in good standing with SCRPA, be a current member of SCRPA, and a programmer in the field, must have rendered outstanding service and/or accomplishments to the leisure service industry and programming for at least three or more years, shown dedication and excellence to their organization and profession, must be of outstanding moral character and professional stature. Justin Miller, our recreation supervisor, meets all of these criteria and more. Justin received this first ever given award on Wednesday, December 6th, at Tiger River Park, and I'd like to show you a brief video that was shown when the award was given. Jim does not trust me with the video, the audio.
I understand.
I'm so glad.
This award is for an individual who has dedicated at least three years of service to the Parks and Recreation field, demonstrated excellence in recreation programming, and exemplified outstanding professionalism in the state of South Carolina. Congratulations, Justin Miller, Recreation Supervisor at the city of Greer, Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Justin oversees all recreational programming for youth, adults, seniors, summer camp, after school programs, special events, and educational programming. Under his leadership, the Recreation Division has flourished. Justin works hard with many outside groups to expand program offerings. He's been a catalyst for relationship development with groups specializing in things like archery, skateboarding, and adaptive pickleball. His efforts have allowed the city of Greer to reach new people and continue to provide diverse programming. His concentrated efforts to provide nature education programming, such as monarch butterfly releases, monarch community garden builds, and purple martin bird conservation awareness are all second to none. Justin exemplifies programming excellence through his impactful and meaningful work in our community. Congratulations, Justin Miller, South Carolina Programming Branch Professional of the Year.
Justin, stay close by because we're gonna get, we're gonna get a picture with the council as well, too. Thank you.
The next award I'd like to give on behalf of the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association is for the Professional of the Year Award. This is the most prestigious award that is given to an individual from SCRPA. The recipient of this award must have at least 15 years of service in a parks and recreation profession and a member of SCRPA for at least five years. They must be currently certified through the National Recreation and Parks Association as a Certified Park and Recreation Professional. They must have rendered outstanding service and/or accomplishments to the parks and recreation community, must have filled a leadership role in the organization and the community, and must be of outstanding moral character and professional status. There was a clear winner this year, and the recipient of this most prestigious award is Red Watson, Assistant Director. To quote Jim Hedley, Executive Director with SCRPA, that while you all see Red from the Greer side of things, we get to see him from a statewide perspective. Be assured that Red is loved, trusted, and respected just as much across the state and in our profession as he is at home in Greer. Red was given this award at the SCRPA Annual Awards Banquet during our joint state conference in Wilmington, North Carolina, on Wednesday, December 10th. His wife Amy and their two boys, Cash and Whit, were present when Red received this award. And now I'd like to show just a brief video that was shown when the award was given to Red.
For the Professional of the Year nominee, must be in the Parks and Recreation profession at least 15 years and a member of the PA for at least five years and professionally served. This award considers service, leadership, and character. The recipient of the 2023 Professional of the Year Award is truly building a hometown legacy by investing in the community he grew up in for nearly three decades. What started out as playing Recreation League baseball while his father volunteered as an umpire has now come full circle. Our recipient works at the same city agency, spending his days serving his community and his nights cheering on his children as they play baseball. The importance of Parks and Recreation was ingrained in Ronald Red Watson from a very young age. Today, that passion is evident in the work he does for his community and by the way he leads his team. Red began his career with the city of Greer in 1995 as a part-time groundskeeper and center coordinator. During his time with Greer PRT, he had served as a full-time program director, athletic supervisor, and now as the Deputy Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. In his current role, Red assisted budget development in the north side, project management and land management, facilities planning and development, and grant development. In 2020, the city of Greer acquired the Greer Country Club and rebranded it as Greer Golf. Red was charged- Greer acquired the Greer Country Club and rebranded it as Greer Golf. Red was charged with overseeing the transition, hiring new staff, retaining employees who previously worked in Greer Country Club, improvement of the eighteen-hole course, and daily logistics. Red has led the team in Greer Golf exceptionally well and ensured there was minimal disruption on the course during renovations. Red Watson has served on numerous SCRPA committees and branches throughout his career. He was a graduate of SCLEA in 2008. Red is paving the way for current and future residents to have access to quality recreational facilities and programs. He is a trusted lead, supervisor, coworker, and friend to many within the City of Greer. Please help us honor our SCRPA's 2023 Professional of the Year, Red Watson.
All right, what I'm going to do is, Council, if we would, I know we want to get some individual pictures. And while we're doing that, if this is the time that you need to slip out, you can take that opportunity. I did want to recognize, I see Chris Bailey in the back of the room from the Realtors Association, Alan Smith with Spartanburg One, and John Kimbrel from Spartanburg One. Thank y'all for being here this evening, and I am sure there are others that I have missed, but we appreciate your attendance here tonight. Council, if y'all would, if y'all would join me in front of the... Council, let's resume where we left off, which was departmental reports. You have your departmental reports contained in your packet this evening. As always, Mr. Mayorman or department heads will be glad to give you any additional information you might need in that regard. And Ms. Howell joins us for our financial activity.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
I'm kind of hung here. Sorry. Okay. Give you a financial report as of November 30th, 2023. Starting out with the General Fund, the year-to-date revenue is $5,927,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $18,454,000, which is right on budget. The cash balance in the General Fund as of November 30th is $8,404,000. Moving on to the Hospitality Fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,553,000, which is 3% over budget. Total expenditures are $2,772,000, and the cash balance is $1,349,000. Finally, the Stormwater Fund, the year-to-date revenue is $84,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $1,385,000, and the cash balance in the Stormwater Fund is $1,690,000. Now I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, floor is open. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate the update.
Yes.
Well, as you can see, Mr. Sell is filling in this evening for Mr. Mayorman, and so, he will bring the Deputy City Administrator's report. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items to note in the report tonight, starting with the Greer Farmer Market Sunday Brunch Series, which will be held this Sunday on the 14th from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. here in Greer City Park. This is a monthly series. Each one's different, and vendors will be posted a few days before each event as they work up to the last minute to add those vendors to the event. Also of note, for this weekend, for this holiday weekend, is the 23rd Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Luncheon. It's going to be held on the 15th here at City Hall. Tickets are still available for $10, and they can be purchased at the City Parks and Recreation Tourism Office located at 446 Pennsylvania Avenue. And they can contact Justin Miller as well for tickets at 864-848-2192. Of note, one of the things we want to make the community aware of, that we do from time to time, is that we have a dedicated area for safe exchanges. This area can be used for anything, from child custody exchanges to purchases made off of Facebook. It's located at the corner of Miller and Point Set, next to the fire station and the police department. Has a kiosk, and it's monitored for safety purposes. We encourage the public to take advantage of that location for that type of activity. It's convenient here and locate the center of town. There are others throughout our community as well, such as at the hospital, but we do have one right here in the middle of town. Also of note, from the Police Department, is that last week, they held a gathering over in the Needmore Community to be able to get with those folks, to provide some exchange information, get some insights on what's going on in the community, and provide information and feedback to the community about what they're seeing and what's going on. It also included a bingo session, which, from looking at the video and everything, looked like everybody had a lot of fun. We were able to provide some prizes for the winners during the bingo contest. It looks like they had a good time and a lot of good information was exchanged. Obviously, this is something that exemplifies not only the city, but the Police Department's commitment to our community engagement. For folks that want to, in their communities, that want to have similar engagement sessions, they feel free to reach out to our Community Outreach Officer, Ashley Wright, and then they can help coordinate those events as well. In the theme of recognizing achievements over the past year, this one comes from us through our Public Service Department. The Greer Athletics Grounds Staff has been recognized with the South Carolina Sports Field Managers Association Sporting Grounds Field of the Year Award for the Subaru Road Park. As Council knows, our staff does an excellent job in maintaining and keeping up our athletic facilities as well as our fields. And this recognition reflects that commitment to maintaining exceptional sports fields and enhancing the community's sports experience. We want to congratulate them on that achievement. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to appointments of boards and commission. Ms. Kirsten Presley joins us now as the Court Administrator in regards to the appointment of our ministerial recorders. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm before you tonight to request the appointment of two current court employees to the position of ministerial recorders for four-year terms in accordance to State Law 1425-115. The first employee is Brianna Compatello. She started with us on November 30th of this past year. She is employed as a Weekend and Holiday Judge. During the week, her regular job is she is a full-time attorney with her own firm in Spartanburg. The second employee is Chantel Johnson. She is our current Deputy Clerk of Court, and she's been with us for a little over a year now, and this would be in addition to her current everyday duties. So I'd like to request the appointment of both of those.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, we will take these individually. Action does need to be taken on both individuals. With that, I will suggest that we approve Brianna Compatello, and that needs to come in the form of a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for any questions or discussion in regards to this appointment. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. In regards to Ms. Chantel Johnson, I'll entertain a motion to receive and a second.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for any discussion or questions of Ms. Presley. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is to elect a Mayor Pro Tim. Section 5-7-190 states that the Mayor Pro Tim is elected from the council membership immediately after any general election for the municipal council, and the council shall elect from its membership a Mayor Pro Tim for a term of not more than two years. The Mayor Pro Tim shall act as the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor. I've got a bad knee, but that's not, I'm not disabled at this point. And if a vacancy occurs in the office, the Mayor Pro Tim will serve as the mayor until the successor is elected. In regards to the election of Mayor Pro Tim, I will open the floor for nominees. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Riley Bettis. Comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As one of the longest-standing members of this council, we appreciate your service, and thank you for all that you do for us, and...
May you have a healthy two years.
Well, thank you. With that, then, let's move on to the item for us, the second item, which is the furniture acquisition at the offices at 113 Berry Avenue. We're joined by Lindsey James, who is the Project Coordinator, and we will hear information from her in regards to the furniture acquisition. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we're nearing completion of the renovation of the 113 Berry Avenue office space, staff solicited a quote from Stevens Office Systems. They were the same furniture supplier that was used during the Phase 1 renovation for furniture that's necessary for the relocation of staff from City Hall, as well as outfitting the new nurses' office space. The quote came in from Stevens Office System in the amount of $136,836.51. Staff requests approval from Council to proceed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from you.
Council, this comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Second. Floor is open for questions. I'm assuming this is all on budget?
It is. It was budgeted.
Discussion?
How many offices, cubicles, or whatever will there be?
This will provide furniture for 10 new office spaces, as well as the nurses' office. So that's in addition to 11, four full-time cubicles, 10 landing, mobile, smaller cubicles, as well as a collaboration room, a lobby for the nurses' office, and some open office area, as well as the break room.
What department will be occupying it?
The full engineering department will be in the existing office space, as well as GIS, IT, and the nurses' office space, and there's room for growth there as well.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 1-2024. We start again with ordinances from coming from the planning and zoning. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Yarborough Properties LLC, located at 122 Sunset Avenue, from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stahl joins us for this conversation. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. This is docket number RZ2312. The address is 122 Sunset Avenue. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood with the intent of subdividing the property. Here's the aerial of the parcel. The current zoning is suburban neighborhood. In green, the purple is rural residential, and the gray is railroad right-of-way. The future land use is traditional neighborhood. Here are the current conditions of the site. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. The surrounding land uses are railroad right-of-way, residential, and Century Park. Staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, it comes to us with a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission and staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive the first reading of ordinance number 1-2024. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Suburban neighborhood would be traditionally what we would think of as R12?
Yes.
And I have personally been in this area, and I looked at a piece of property that was about four or five doors down, and almost every one of these lots that leads up to this would be what I would consider to be R20. And so, I think that would fit in nicely with what, that would fit in with what traditional neighborhood is.
Yes, this will be more similar to the adjacent lot sizes, for sure.
How many lots are they going to create?
Just two.
One question I might have. Where will they have the access for the other lot? How will that be?
It'll be off Sunset. It's about 65 feet wide in the front, so they have plenty of room for two driveways.
Is this going to, now, this is right at the entrance to get into the back way of the park?
It is.
Is that going to be an issue?
I don't believe so. The driveway is off Sunset. There's a gate right there at the end of the street. I don't foresee any issues.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 2-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain property owned by CAPASFRLLC, located at 108 and 116 Brown Street, from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stahl?
This is docket number RZ2313. This is a rezoning for two separate parcels. Their addresses are 108 and 116 Brown Street. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood, also with the intent of subdividing both properties. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the current zoning map. The light green areas are zone suburban neighborhood. The blue is design review district, and the orange is commercial. The future land use is traditional neighborhood. Here is a photo of current conditions at the site. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. The surrounding land uses are residential. Staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Council, the ordinance number 2-2024 comes to you with a recommendation from Planning Commission and its staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
By going to traditional neighborhood, does that give them the ability to...
So this is similar.
Have a duplex by right?
Yes, it would.
And that's the same thing for the last site, too, as well. Is that right?
That's correct.
I didn't hear that.
So by, so by right, if we grant this type of zoning, now they have the ability without permission, special permission, to build a duplex on this site, these sites, and then the last one as well? And I honestly kind of forgot about that.
I believe the applicant may be present, if you'd like them to approach.
Well, hold on. I've got a question as well about, it's a procedural question. Why are we doing two separate lots on one ordinance?
It's the same owner, and it's, you know, it's on the same street, similar property size.
And so, the intent is to subdivide?
Intent is to subdivide both of them, yes. Yes, sir.
So back to Mr. Dumas, is if they subdivided it, could they put on these two lots four duplexes?
So there's two existing homes, and I believe the intent is to keep those. But potentially, yes, if they demolish those, they could put a duplex on each.
A duplex on each new lot?
If they demolish the existing homes, it would be a duplex on the new lot and the existing lot next to it. So if you drew a dividing...
They have four duplexes.
Correct, hypothetically.
I see that as an issue.
But that is not their intent, to be clear. It's just their right.
I understand. So let me, let me at this point interject, and obviously, late to the party, I am, sorry. By show of hand, is the owner or representative of the owner of ordinance number 1-2024, which was the Yarborough Properties, are you with us this evening? You are? Okay. For clarification at this point, what is the intent in terms of the subdivision of that lot at this point?
Two single-family homes.
Two single-family homes? Thank you. All right, with that, then, let's go to the first reading of ordinance number 2-2024. Is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening, are you willing to answer questions in that regard? Okay, I believe there are some. Would you come to the podium, please, and state your name as a matter of record?
Michael Roth with TMC Development. I'm the applicant of this rezoning.
Okay, I think there is some question in regards to the use of this property. Do you want to offer any clarity, or would you answer any questions in that regard?
Sure, yeah. What we're essentially trying to do is to go back to the 1924 plat, which showed like this, each lot as lots very similar to the lots on the north, and that was what was originally plotted in 1924. Obviously, a lot of changes since then. We're essentially reverting back to that plat.
Would your intent be that these are single-family homes or duplexes?
I did not even know about the duplexes until just now. So the intent was single-family, and we are only doing the lots.
Others? You said you're only doing the lots?
Yeah, so we are, so I'm only buying the lots. The homes will be left there, the homes that are existing.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Those will be left there, and we are, I'm not acquiring those.
Understand. Others? Thank you, sir. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
If others questions arise, I'll ask you to return. All right, with that, I think we are caught up to this point. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Next item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 3-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Liba and German Garcia located at 501 New Woodruff Road from Commercial General to Medium Density Residential. Ms. Stahl?
This is docket number RZ2314. The address is 501 New Woodruff Road. The existing zoning is Commercial General, and the request is to rezone to Medium Density Residential with the intent of subdividing the property. Here's the aerial of the property. There are two existing homes on site. They are condemned currently, and the property owners are intending to return this zoning to residential, so that way they can improve the properties and live in them. Here's the current zoning map. The light green is Commercial General. The purple is Rural Residential. The yellow is Medium Density Residential, and the gray areas are unzoned Spartanburg County. The future land use is traditional neighborhood and mixed employment. And here are the current conditions at the site. Once again, the request is to rezone to Medium Density Residential. The surrounding land uses are residential. Staff recommendation is approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
All right, show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. Are you available for questions? Okay. With that, then, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
What does medium density allow, a little more specifically?
So specifically, the reason we're recommending medium density is because of its location on 101. It's a denser residential district that's more appropriate for that corridor. It does allow a higher density of dwelling units, 17.5 per acre, I believe. But once again, that is not their intent.
I mean, what's the size of that tract of land?
It's 1.8 acres, 8.1.86, I believe.
So you're saying they could have 17 units?
Per acre. So the maximum would be 32. They already have two existing. But given the site, there's one driveway, and they would need to share access. The slope would be challenging. I can't imagine they would ever do anything so intense.
But if it's changed that medium density, then they theoretically could go back and subdivide it?
Theoretically.
Do that, right? So what you just said is one driveway wouldn't be an issue, is that correct?
It depends on how they decided to develop it.
Would you like to come to the podium, please? If you would, state your name as a matter of the record.
Name is Angel Cardona, the applicant for this land.
Mr. Cardona, let's clear up if, at least your intent for this property, or how you foresee that it would be used.
It's definitely not 32 units. That's too dense right there, I think. But the road would be fixed up with DOT. I mean, DOT is definitely going to put some stuff on me, and preferably just put single-family homes on them. I think maybe five to six.
All right. Are you going to demolish these two?
As of now, probably not. But we'll see how, what the contractor says, the general contractor.
Others? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Questions? Comments? Question? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 4-2024. This is an ordinance reviving the annexation of a portion of a certain property owned by Arena and Jorslog Gentesturek located at 220 Pleasant Drive by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of suburban neighborhood for said property. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record it'll indicate, no one indicated so. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Oh, excuse me. Let's back up. Ms. Stahl?
All right, this is AN2317. The address is 220 Pleasant Drive. The existing zoning is unzoned Spartanburg County, and the request is to annex and zone to suburban neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the property. You can see part of the property is in the city, and part of the property is unzoned Spartanburg County. Their intent is to annex into the city, so the entire parcel is in the city's jurisdiction, and then possibly subdivide and build another single-family unit for a family member. The surrounding zoning in light green is suburban neighborhood. The purple is manufacturing and logistics. The future land use is mixed employment. Here are the current conditions at the site. Once again, the request is to annex to medium density and zone to medium density residential. The surrounding land uses are residential. Staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Recommendation for approval from commission and staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. I did that.
Is this what we just did? Is this what we just received? You have a motion.
We've already have.
We got a motion. Excuse me. I really am flustered tonight. All right, we got a motion. Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
Do we know what the intent is here? Do we know anything about the project?
I believe from early discussions, the intent is to build another single-family home on the site for a family member.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. All right, counsel, let's move to, thank you. Counsel, let's move to the first and final reading of Resolution 1-2024. This is the resolution adopting the City of Greer annual safety statement. Mr. Sell leads in this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, there's no additional information. This is the annual safety statement that we resolved to on an annual basis. It remains unchanged from last year.
Counsel, with a recommendation from staff, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, last item of business this evening is the first and final reading of Resolution 2-2024. This is a resolution to update the City of Greer blood-borne pathogens standard to comply with occupational safety and health administration requirements. Mr. Sell?
Mayor, again, no additional information. That is the annual statement that we resolved to on an annual basis.
Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for discussion.
Could you go through this line by line and give us an explanation of it?
There's one line.
Additional comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have three items to discuss in executive session this evening. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Well, I'll need somebody to state what the matters are, please.
Come on, pro temp. Can you read that? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, and that's allowed by state statute section 30-470A1. And then we also have two contractual matters to discuss, and that's allowed by state statute 30-470A2, and that's to discuss Project Titus and then Project Indy. The first one's a personnel matter.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive to go into executive session.
Second.
Yes, it comes as a motion and second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, in executive session, we've considered three matters. One was a personnel matter pertaining to administration. One was contractual in nature, and the third one was contractual in nature. We've taken no action on any of those, and don't anticipate doing so after we come out of executive session. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sell?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we stand adjourned.